All right, well, we'll call the meeting to order at whatever time you want to call it.
Me?
Six thirty-two.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, um, do you have any reason to, what if I can throw on page, okay, to, um, change it? Is there anything else?
I mean, I don't know, you know, I, I think that seven should be put up to six and six to seven, I mean, David's on the, at least the golf or whatever, he doesn't need to stay here for the whole, you know, here about marijuana.
Okay.
Hole number nine. No, I don't know.
Okay, uh, so we'll move number seven to number six and six to seven. All in favor of accepting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Entertainer motion to approve the minutes of June eighteenth.
So moved.
I have not had anything in the minutes that I saw.
I'm good, I'm good with it, I just wanted to check one section again to make sure.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of June eighteenth, please say aye.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of June twentieth.
And again, I didn't have anything.
I don't have anything on that. I'm good with that.
Okay, all in favor of the minutes as presented for June twentieth, please say aye.
Aye, motion to accept minutes of June twenty-fifth. I'm good with that, that was a short one, I was just setting the tax rate.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay, David is accepting the minutes of June twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye, motion to accept the minutes of July tenth. That was the tax rate, the other one was the public safety, whatever.
Yeah, that was the one last contractor.
That was, that was the one last one that we asked to revisit.
I have no issue with this, just that we stuck the tax rate stayed to what we said, um, back in January, and the school tax rate is actually about a penny less than what was forecasted from January.
Yeah, and we made a point that the approved tax rate was the same one that was published in the book at the meeting, so that wasn't changed. So all in favor of July ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have anything that's not on the agenda?
No, not, no concerns, I would just like to say, um, we did get our tax rate for the state, um, last week.
Chet?
Yes.
And, um, the Listers, specifically Butch Fendizen, had put out a text to, I think, myself and Jennifer, because it was six cents higher than what we were talking about in the first place.
Yep.
Um, I went to Chet and told Chet just to get ahold of, you know, take care of it, because it's the town stuff, it's not me, the school.
Right.
And he, Chet contacted the finance person out and it came back that, um, the state was wrong, and it's actually a penny less than what we've had in the book, and I believe that the finance director and the supervisory union put out an email to all the other towns in our district, because the mistake was drawn there, and put out a thank you letter or something to you, Chet, for bringing, for bringing the town of Killington, for bringing it to their attention. So, just say thanks, Chet, and Butch.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's it.
Um, I don't have what would be considered a concern, I was just gonna mention that today, uh, work started on East Mountain Road, so anybody that's traveling over there, they're, today they're milling, which is bringing up all the pavement and chewing it up and packing it back down, uh, that's gonna go on for two weeks probably?
Well, the reclaim itself will take three days, the pavement will not be put back on until, like, the third week of August, because now we have to do, finish the ditch work and culverts were replacing.
And then ditch work after, right, okay.
And then the paving will go back in.
Okay, uh, but that started today and, uh, there's not a lot of traffic there this time of year, so it seems to be going pretty well. Um, citizen input, you folks?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Next year, according to the state, we're supposed to start compacting.
I'm sorry.
Composting?
Composting?
Composting, okay.
Composting. Has the town done anything to assist people who live in town on composting, like putting a big barrel down in the transfer station, or?
We currently have-
Or with an idea that maybe the town can buy a bunch of composting barrels and sell them costs to the residents?
So, I believe that the state of Ramat is encouraging everybody to compost, and made a law of composting, but I believe that the law states that a compost facility has to be so many mi- within so many miles, and, um, I know it's for restaurants that was that way, and that restaurants in Killington, since there's, um, not a close enough composting facility, they don't have to do it. So I would check into that rule.
Well, the rule, the rule for the transfer station is we have to accept it, we did get two, um, toders, to, if, if people do bring it to the transfer station, um, because what the, the law already went into effect, we're supposed to be composting, the issue is technically the, what did I think they say, in 2020, that it's banned from the landfill, July 1 of 2020, so it's supposed to be being collected, and the issue has been, there is no place really accepting it, we have to actually truck it to Middlebury, um, it's my understanding that Casella is working on the ability, uh, of a facility to accept it at some point in the future, um, so we're hoping that that takes effect, because otherwise it's gonna get very expensive very quickly. Um, we have not worked on anything as far as providing it to individual owners, but we are working at, with what we have to do as far as the transfer station.
Well, what I was muchly concerned about is, I don't know about everyone else's property, but my reading of it is you're supposed to dig a hole and put it in there in your yard. I don't know about everyone else's yard, but ours is primarily stone.
No, they're, they're saying that they're-
I think we grow stone.
They're, they're, they want people to compost, but they're not expecting everybody to compost in their own backyard.
No, that's true.
They're not, but they're not.
If they do win, then they take the town or someone else.
But Chet said that we have to ex-
Currently, we got the toders delivered, although the issue we're having right at the moment is the Bears kinda took them apart, we're trying to work on that process, so we were-
Next thing I was gonna add.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at all of those pieces, trying to work with Casella, who is our supplier, to, to get those items addressed.
So, got a question. Um, does the bill address what state of composting it has to be in before it's brought here? Are we talking just-
It's food scraps.
Scraps?
Food scraps, they, they bring them here raw, and then they go to a compost facility.
Okay, and-
They're not composted prior to us getting them.
This may sound strange, but does someone have to inspect the bags before they're put in, to make sure that it's compostable?
Not at this time, what typically, what, what happens is, is, and the same issue relates-
Right now, there's no police.
The, the issue is when Casella is getting our waste, you know, whether it's the recycling, whether it's the compactor or those facilities, they know, there's always a certain amount of contamination, and contamination means the wrong kind of materials, um, when, if we are sending materials where we have a high rate of it, then we will have to take on one of those types of inspection processes, what might be a, a situation where we have to go to clear bags or something.
Okay.
You know what I mean, but we are not at that point yet, we're, are, we have been running well within normal, uh, contamination rates.
So now that I don't have a dumpster at my place, I've got a, um, commercial license at the Rutland County Waste, whatever, they accept there.
Yes, yep, they do.
So, you know, and I was told that I didn't have to buy a, a pass from them, I could've just used my Killington pass.
Well, you're, okay.
So can't we just take down Darily to the, as, as the town?
And that's what, well, we, these are all the pieces we have to look into, because it's-
Not go to Middlebury, go to Rutland County Waste District, because we belong to it.
Right, but the issue is, is that process, and we'll have to figure out how we do that. Um, but, just so everybody's aware, buying the town sticker, we are a member of the Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Right.
If you have a town sticker, you are entitled to use that facility, however, if you were bringing trash, and you pay their trash by weight, there's two different rates if you don't have a sticker of theirs.
Right.
So if you're going to be bringing trash and, and have to deal with weight, you'd be much better buying their sticker as well as ours, you have to have ours regardless. Um, but just so everybody knows, I mean, as far as recycling goes, there should be no cost at all, and you can also-
I paid twenty dollars for a commercial license, and I get charged, we went, I brought eleven hundred and fifty pounds down of trash.
Yep.
I was charged, you know, not the, and I don't have a sticker from Killington, just so you know.
Okay, well, that's them not paying attention, you're supposed to make sure you're a member, but that's okay.
Maybe commercials different.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, but, I think they charge ten cents a pound for compost or something down there.
Okay.
It is an issue, and it's going on, and-
It'll be resolved.
Well, you, it's resolved for you, just bring it down to the town dump, and they have to accept it, now it's up to the town to get rid of it.
The problem is, is not that it's difficult to bring it down there, it's to get my wife to put the scraps into a separate bag.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we can get into that.
I'll leave that between you and your wife.
Did you have a follow-up question, or was it the Bears?
It was the Bears.
It was the Bear, okay, anybody else?
Um, I own, uh, my father and I own property on the end of Richardson Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, there was, you know, some damage this spring and whatnot, and it was fixed just before the Fourth of July, but it's starting to wash out again.
Okay.
And, well, is there any idea what protocol there is to fixing, definitely needs some rip rap?
So the question goes down to the town manager, Richardson Road.
Well, this is, this is the one that, there was, at the top of the road, we weren't able to complete everything we wanted to complete prior to July Fourth, we will be making another run-up there after we get through the, the road reconstruction project on East Mountain, but it'll be like the fall.
My question is, what type of road is it, is this-
It's class four.
It's class four.
It's class four, but I'm just wondering, you know, what there was for ideas, and I'm trying to work on my own road above Al's old place, and, you know, I'm having a hard time getting through there with one ton, and it's just kinda starting to wash back into the road, just, you know, it's right along the road, I understand it's a tough spot, ledge on one side.
Now, have you seen what we've been talking about on class four roads here?
I'm not sure what your protocol is.
We just drew up a whole, to, to verify what a class four road describes, so you might want to, at least at the end, give a, give a, your email address to them, and they can send you the, but he can also tell you now.
I mean, the, the, what we do is, we will, because it's class four, we have to do the twos and threes first, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, and we are, we do one grading a year to make sure it's cleaned up, and we usually bring up some gravel to do that, and we will fix culverts and wash outs, um, once we get everything else, when we're caught up again, we will get up there as soon as we can, um, so that's basically what the, the policy says, but it is a complete class four road policy, um, but it, I was talking to Rick, who's, who's the foreman, who's been taking care of it, and he said that, you know, we, he's gotta go, he's got another two or three days up there, he's gotta get there when he, when we get a break.
Okay, I mean, is there, are you gonna put rip rap, or is that something?
No, there was, he said, we, there was stone we had to bring up for one of the areas, and I, I can't speak to if it was exactly what you're talking about, but he did-
It's the only spot.
Okay, he said that there was, there was an area where he wanted to bring some bigger stone up.
Okay.
So, we will get there.
All right.
Yeah, and just so you know, they just yesterday were able to get up to the end of, uh, Roaring Brook Road, which had started to wash out, so they, they are gradually getting place to place to place.
I didn't, wasn't sure what, you know, those landowners were responsible for, because it's a class four road.
As far as, as far as landowners go, like, if you need to do something in the interim, that you, you call, you call or email, and we can give you permission to have somebody come up and do it, but it's not at the town's expense, I mean, you can do things in between if you need to, or if you wanna make an improvement, you just have to get permission from the town manager to do that.
You're one step better than a private road. The only best, the, the one, the one step, well, I mean, but the one step is, is that you're at the bottom, because it's a class four, we gotta get the other, yeah, but you're ahead of private roads.
And I appreciate what you guys have done before, I mean, it was pretty bad, but hopefully we can make sure culverts don't get plugged up again.
Do you have an idea of what time limit, ti- time, whatever?
Well, if, if everything goes, as we hope, we're talking like the end of August, beginning of September, because we, somewhere, when we go to pave East Mountain Road, that's when we'll be done, we have a rented machine, we gotta finish all our ditch work with, um, so as soon as we get our portion of that work done, then we'll be breaking free to do stuff like that.
So what he's basically telling you, if you can't wait before, if you can't wait till end of August, beginning of September, but if it gets worse, and it's by September, if you can't wait that long, then talk to him, and maybe you can get approval to move stuff in.
Dump a load of rip rap.
Yeah.
Dump them in there, just start doing some stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Roger?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a quick letter here, on, on what I wrote up, "Thank you, Town of Killington, for taking action on the short-term rental environment in our town, and researching the town's regulation opportunities. Public health and safety issues facing our neighborhoods appear to be a lack, the result of a lack of town's regulation and enforcement. For example, a short-term rental in our neighborhood advertises and rents for three-fifths times the capacity of the original zoning permit on record with the town. Subject of the parking has not been modified with this particular occupancy. Imagine the impact. We are frustrated by noise disruptions at all hours, cars parked in the road which block the town's plow and emergency vehicles, but more so by the lack of action by the previous town manager. It is no surprise that Killington is such a popular short-term rental location. The town is right to investigate and establish solutions that balance our economic opportunities and the quality of life all residents live here for, and work to, and find, and work to achieve. Thank you." The other thing I'd like to say is, a little concerned about seeing bids already that are five hundred thousand dollars over on the public safety bill.
Okay, one thing to remember with that?
I know the bids.
The bids, but, the main thing to remember with that, the vote was a not-to-exceed number.
Okay.
So, it's gonna come back to us and the committee to deal with the bids, because it will not go over the number that was bid, that was voted on, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So the fact that some of these bids are coming in higher, we're gonna have to readdress pretty much every part of that building.
Well, so I-
Well, I, I just-
Why not finish?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm a little concerned to see just even the bids coming in that, not much over, and that's just on the exterior part of the building, we haven't even gotten to the bids on the interior portion of the building. So I understand that we only border around a certain amount, but either we're gonna need, hopefully we're gonna stick to that number, or we're gonna either do something about getting the bids to be closer to the number, or scaling back the size of the project to stay within the budget, just like most of the, they're gonna have a budget for something. Um, so that's my concern about that, and then, um, lastly is, it's a little concerning to me to see what I would consider town employees grievances aired at this meeting, and publicly in Red and the Mountain Times. I think that if we don't have a policy on that, and we should have a policy on that, and I think the proper procedure for those grievances is just press them to check, and then, even written, write them to check, and then have Chet present them to you, and if they can't be spoken about in public, then you guys should have executive session for those grievances to hear from employees. I don't think that this is the proper format for employees to hear their grievances, and that's the end of my statement.
That's okay.
Now, have you been telling me any more about the bodies?
Well, I, I gotta step in on it, all right?
Okay.
We, we had the bids come in, and the one thing that I was pushing for was, you know, at this one afternoon meeting, that not everyone could make, but, and the Mountain Times came out with, were five hundred thousand dollars over, but what I specifically asked for, so when we come to the next meeting, is that, oh yeah, we could be five hundred thousand dollars over here, we're not five hundred thousand dollars over the project, okay? So I wanted to know, what percentage are we at with that five hundred, we're at thirty percent of the total bids, forty percent of the total bids, and where do you see the rest of the project going? So hopefully, they're going to hit where we're gonna get, because there were some bids in there that were lower, there was two that were definitely really high.
Just for clarification, when they took the total numbers that were on the sheet, there were things in there that had already been decided by the building committee to be reduced, we had, we had options in there, the actual amount of money that, because the two, two of the, the two worst items were the mechanical and electrical, both of those are way up, because the material costs are way up, because of everything that's going on, the total amount of the project to date is about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars over budget, we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of contingency, and we are over fifty percent of the way through the bid process, so we're still on track, and then something comes out that's weird, the numbers are way inflated, and we're not that percentage over at this point, but what we did, what, with the purpose of that meeting and that process was, several of the sections of the, of the project, whether it was, uh, electrical, mechanical, and fire safety, they are actually design-build subcontracts, what we authorized was them to finish the design as part of their bid process, so we have only approved in the neighborhood of fifty or sixty thousand dollars to move, to get to the final numbers, uh, which is what we'll be getting in mid-August.
Go ahead.
I mean, if I ask, since I'm telling them, thing on the building they built, is it all metal, is it all wood, concrete?
It's both, all three.
It's, I was gonna say, it's not, it's not all of, I mean, one thing.
It's all, all three?
No, why I ask, it seems to me, when the, when the plans were drew up for the town garage, the first plans were drawn up were brick and stone, at the town garage, people argued that, and the plans were changed, and it became an all-metal building, which was a hell of a lot cheaper, I just wonder if it's, Public Safety Department, it's one of these grand steams that the town in the past has had?
No.
Where it wants to build a-
That was the seven million dollar price that came, that was the seven million dollar number that came out years ago, but basically, it's, it's virtually the same type of construction on the, on the bays as the town garage, when I talk about the masonry portion, the masonry comes up four feet, because the metal on the garage keeps getting hit with snow coming off the roof, so we, we are doing four feet of masonry to protect the building, and then it's, it's structural in the, in the office area, but it's actually a wood frame construction, so it's a, it's a much less expensive building, it's, it's, it's a very basic construction.
That's okay.
I was wondering how it's done, because I remember even a great discussion set went on on the town garage.
Right, and that's why, you know, we, we have a committee with a half a dozen non-members of police, fire, rescue, any of that, they're, they're people from town, um, to ask those kind of questions, and say, you know, this is okay, but why are we doing this, and have you considered this other thing, and, um, we've been looking at this for a long time, and a lot of the questions have come to a point, and the design architects have brought in some things which were turned down, and other things that were approved, so we're, we're still very much in the approval process of what we're doing.
Well, I had regretted it's dragged on for some time, it's gone on for a few years.
Well, it, it, well, it took almost two years to get the right lot, um, we had a lot of lots that we looked at, that we found one reason or another that they just didn't work, and it will be at least another year and a half before we're anywhere near done.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, okay, any-
That's if it wasn't used.
Okay, thank you, anything else? Okay, uh, we're gonna move to number seven, David, Green Mountain Golf Course.
Okay. So I'm here primarily, I think, for June financials, so I have some key points here to, to go over some of the numbers, our rounds in June, and this is compared to budget, we hit twenty-two, twenty-two hundred, we're budgeted at twenty-six hundred, I'm sort of rounding these off for simplicity here. Our good news, that's that, some of the bad news, good news is our average price, our average per round rate, uh, was just under fifty-four dollars compared to a budget of fifty-one, so we made some improvements there, so that's, that's one of the key metrics that Brown certainly operates towards, to increase that round, that revenue per player. Our overall revenue was at one oh one, compared to budget of one nineteen, um, that was low for mostly the concern of weather, uh, that round count would certainly indicate that as well.
Mm-hmm.
So what I'm reading here, and what you're showing, is different, but I think we can-
Yeah, basically, last year, um, on the town side, we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in greens fees revenue, we're a hundred and eleven, we're about nine behind right now.
Yeah.
For the, for this point in the year.
That's combination of, yeah, green fee revenue and cart revenue.
And, yeah, just to ask, could you, just, because you're on camera, um, it lists special greens fees as opposed to eighteen-hole green fees, and then nine-hole fees are separate?
That's, that's just the way the system, uh, processes a green fee, um, it could be, um, a green fee that comes in from one of our third-party providers, like GolfNow or Toff.com or something like that.
Yep.
And that would be the distinction within the system for that.
Okay, 'cause this is really the first year that that ability has been active.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you're also breaking out range ball, you know, the range, small, medium, large.
Yes.
You're also breaking out, um, some other numbers in here that I've seen before.
Considerably more broken out than it has been in the past.
Yeah, well, we did when we had- Well, I mean, the food, the food has restaurant food, snack bar food, beverage bar food, tournament, non-alcoholic beverages, you go through that, beer, you've got the restaurant beer, then you also have the cart beer, so we can know what's going through the two.
Separated the beverage cart this year, which we've never done in the past, and it's an interesting exercise to do.
But you also have, like, wine broken out in wine, and then you have the liquor, restaurant liquor, and the beverage cart liquor also.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's, it's more detailed, and that's what we were looking for, so, I mean, what, what I end up looking at on these reports is, people are asking, oh, you know, how's the weather doing at the golf course, and I was like, well, it hasn't been, the weather hasn't been really cooperating for the golf course, but I take a look, and I see the actual last year for period six, which is the end of June, was three hundred and five thousand dollars, and for the end of, that was last year, and for the end of this year, it's two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, so, you know, it's twenty-three thousand dollars off, but then I just go, because we're not micromanaging, you're a golf course, we're asking you guys to run it, so then I go all the way to the last one, and I see that last year, your total expenditures are four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, and this year, the total expenditures are four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, so basically, we're forty-five thou-
I would say ten percent, or if not better, than that twenty-nine hundred round count, and that's what our business really depends on, is getting those rounds, getting those people through the door. So that's, you know, that's the, the projection for June, you mentioned food and beverage, numbers there are up too.
Yes.
With the changes we've made, um, so I think that's quite a, quite a good thing to, quite a good story, and we're, we're adding some of our marketing towards that to get people in, you know, to come in and have lunch, and sit on the deck, and do some simple things like that.
So now, you, you're counting the AJGA rounds, which was five hundred.
Yeah.
So you had like eight hundred and something, is that?
We did eight thirty-five, so we did two fifty-nine members in public round.
Right, for the month of-
For that week.
For that, for that week.
When we were closed for basically-
For that week.
Four days.
Right, so that would be the, you know, I mean, normally you wouldn't have the five hundred that AJGA came in with.
Ah, so that's an elevated week, yeah.
So when we see the July numbers coming in, um, because you like to use the AJGA, we're gonna see a drop in the average round then, because you're gonna be averaging that and also.
Correct.
Okay, but, so we shouldn't be shocked here when, you know, it drops, it drops, because it's the five hundred rounds or whatever, that will, that will drop that number down.
We're looking at between seven and eight hundred a week round count on a good week in July, August, and September, then obviously that's gonna take into account for, for this month.
Right, it's just be good weather on weekends, and Thursdays and Fridays.
That's it, Fridays, Thursdays, and, exactly. Um, yeah, some key points that we're working towards here, and, and our, um, our social media reach has increased, narrowing mailing to, uh, twenty-seven thousand people, which is an increase on last year, Facebook, we've engaged over ten thousand more customers, so, uh, simple things like that through regular involvement. So, uh, simple things like that through regular involvement in email messages and social media engagement is, is making a good deal of difference to our business as well. Um, and during June, this is a great story for us, we were awarded best public golf course in Vermont by a publication called Northeast Golfer. It's a glossy publication. You know, it's, it's not Golf Digest, but it's still a very, very good publication to have. They list all, um, public and private golf courses, not only in our state, but also in New Hampshire and Maine and Connecticut and most of New England. So, um, that was a, that was a, a good feather in our cap.
So, now, Justin gave me a call when that came in and just, and you know, and there will be a lot of people in town that will be smiling because we are the only municipal, whatever.
True muni, yeah.
True muni. But the big thing about that is, is that, um, Justin had mentioned to me, you know, it's a big deal because they were capable of marketing it the right way and getting it out there on their website and everything. And you guys saw a really big drive in internet, people, people searching for that. And that, that's what I think we should really, you know, it's right now, we've been getting that award for a while, but this is the first, we're, we're tracking and they were able to actually see by putting that information out there that it drove traffic to our website. So, you know, yes, we've been getting it every year, but now we have a, we have a management company in there that is driving it out there and marketing.
Putting it out again.
It's putting it out there and getting the feedback into, which that's what we, that's why we hired Brown on.
Yeah. And that certainly is the case. It's on our website, it was in our email blast, uh, it was on our Facebook page, it was on all our.
But that drove, by doing that, it drove, that, that week, it drove your web presence up.
Yeah, yeah, dramatically.
So.
That's, you know, pretty much I have, I can certainly have some questions if you'd have some.
Okay. Did you have a question?
My only one is relates to the old golf course. Is there any timeline when the debt may be paid off?
There is. Uh, we'll pass that to Chet because he's handling.
2025 is the last of the original bonds. Um, the one that was taken out in 2009, we're going to have to refinance next, in the next budget year. And then so, that will be 10 years for that last piece.
Okay, it's been a long time.
Yes, it has.
I remember when it was first proposed.
Well, the good thing is, is we're going to go from paying 350,000 or 60,000 a year to 150 in about a year. So, it'll be a little, you know, we'll still, we'll be improving as far as the cash drain.
Great, good to hear. I won't be here, but then.
You're moving?
You don't know that. You're moving.
Almost 100 years old, but I found that.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it was fast and I was 55, 60 years old. Here it is. Almost 40 years later.
I won't say I was 55, but I was here when the discussion and when it was passed also.
I wasn't. I was actually, I was actually here then too, believe it or not. 94, we moved in because 95 was when the first bond was taken out. That's the 30-year bond that's up in 2025.
It's doing a lot better than it was.
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the things.
I have to hear you hired a firm to handle the golf course, not internally handle it.
Right.
Because I don't think the internal group is doing very well.
Well, and we hired, we hired someone that this is what they do and is it, are they up to 28 courses that they manage? 28 courses on the East Coast? So, it's someone, it's a, this is what they do for a business.
And we're their first priority, right?
Absolutely.
In one sense.
In Vermont, right?
Well. I'm going to give you more than two cents on this. The first two cents is, we are the first New England golf course that this company represents.
Oh, and also municipal golf course.
Well, the municipal part. And this is a company that wants to move towards the Northeast. And to be able to market the fact that they are managing the number one public golf course in the state. So, they're working really hard to make this work and, and have this come out. The other thing, because we were both here when this was first discussed, this is my other two cents. Part of the sales pitch was that we had arguably the best ski area in the East and, but we had no business in the summer. And the idea of the golf course was to bring people here in the summertime. The number that never gets added in because it's virtually impossible to come up with is the number of mon, the amount of money that's spent in town by the roughly 10,000 rounds of golf that come here every summer from outside the immediate area. So, someone like myself, I drive home, okay? Someone from Rutland can drive home. The 10,000 is about half of what a normal year is and those people are coming from a distance, so they're staying overnight somewhere, they're eating in the restaurants. And this actually ties in with AJGA, which on the front end looks like it's sort of a loser money-wise for the course, but for the town, we had 144 participants and these kids are high school age. So, probably 75% of them had to bring their families. And those people are not put up by the locals. They have to rent places to stay, they have to go places to eat, they go and do other things. Someone told me that on Friday, the adventure park at Killington was doing a turnaway business with the number of kids that showed up to be part of the adventure park. So, during that week, we had between 300 and 400 people in town who wouldn't have been here. We can't measure that amount of money, but that's a lot of people to bring into town for four days. And in my mind, that's what the course was built for and that part of it has to be factored in, is what it does for the town. Okay, I'm out of money.
So, Chet and I have already spoken about this, but certainly scheduling some time to discuss AJGA for next year.
Right. And we have, what is it, 60 days?
Yes.
From the tournament?
Till the end of August, I believe, more or less.
Yeah, it's basically. On the end of the, from the end of it.
From the end of the tournament, okay. Thank you, David.
Thanks a lot.
We will move on to the marijuana dispensary ordinance.
They posted the, uh, the draft ordinance as we took from some other towns that have instituted a similar ordinance last year. I have, the one that I've given to you tonight is actually the one I had Jim Barlow do a review of. He had a couple of minor edits that, to recommend. The purpose of this dispensary ordinance, um, there's been some discussion about the medical marijuana side and, and having dispensaries in town. Many towns are passing laws to not allow, uh, medical marijuana dispensaries to exist. This, this ordinance would become virtually nonexistent if the state or when the state decides to pass recreational marijuana. But what this would allow us to do is to prevent the use of, or prevent some, somebody from coming in and trying to run a dispensary in town, which is basically only for Vermont residents who get a, a card that allows them to obtain medical marijuana. So, this was a recommendation, some discussions we had, some people that from the out, other towns were inquiring about, you know, is this something the select board would be interested in? We talked about this briefly at the last meeting and the, it seemed to be the, a direction we may want to move in. So, I created the, the draft ordinance, had it reviewed by our council. And basically, uh, while there is no requirement to pass an ordinance to have a public hearing, it is recommended that, you know, we announce it, we have a, you know, a public comment and, and post that this ordinance would be enacted because all of the ordinance requirements actually are after the select board passes it where there's, uh, it has to be posted in, in so many areas and then there's 60 days where somebody can put together a, a.
Do you have this on your computer so you can put it up on the screen?
Yes, I do. Sorry about that. Basically, the, the intent is, is that, you know, someone could petition the town to have a town meeting to, to try to get it repealed if that's what they wanted to do. I think the better option is to make sure we get enough input from the, from the townspeople to, uh, before we pass it. So, if we want to move forward with this, um, I don't have any objection to the, the changes that Mr. Barlow made to the ordinance and would recommend that we publicly warn this, uh, for the August 20th meeting and let everybody know. And actually, I probably would put this in the paper and everything.
So, section two, can you scroll down to the new B?
Yeah.
That's the only one, I mean, I'm, I'm not for medical marijuana in the town of Killington. I mean, we're not a medical town. But B says the consumption of marijuana in a public place, including on any property or any building or structure owned or controlled by the town of Killington is prohibited. There are many public buildings in here and I don't think we should be getting involved in other people's, because that's not talking about, that's talking about consumption of marijuana. And consumption of marijuana, I, I don't know, someone might own a bar and it's a, it's a public building and at the end of the shift or whatever, they smoke a joint, whatever you do. So, I mean, I, I would just question why it says the, you know.
This was just a, an example of.
Oh, yeah, I know. So, what I'm getting at is, is that I would just question the consumption of marijuana in a public place. That's all. It's legal to smoke and, and the state of Vermont has already passed rules of saying where you can and can't smoke. So, that's the only thing I would, you know.
So.
I mean, I would say in the town of Killington that we're going to say that, you know, that in the town of Killington, it's, it's prohibited to smoke into any, you know, any, um, buildings owned or by the town of Killington.
Right. But this is similar to the smoking ordinance where each restaurant decided on their own whether they would allow smoking in their restaurants?
Well, the state.
Well, the state says you can't.
The state came out and it had to do with how much food was offered and that.
You could take out the including on any property and just in any building or structure owned. And this is own, this is stuff that's owned by the town of Killington. They're saying you can't smoke it on town property.
Right. And that's what I think it's supposed to, but the first part is saying public place. So, public place could be any public place. And that, and I think what they're trying to do is saying that, because then it says including on any property or building, structure owned or controlled by. So, if you're saying including, that means you're including other places of public places. And that's all, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I don't.
So, we could, we could actually just take out in a public place, including, go the consumption of marijuana.
I would say the consumption of marijuana.
We restrict it to property.
Owned by the town of Killington is prohibited.
Correct. And that's what I think.
Restricted to town property.
And I think that's what we're here to do. And on the top part is dispensaries, you know, are not allowed.
So, like that.
The consumption of marijuana on any property or any building or structure owned or controlled by, yeah, that, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, okay. Will we just take that out?
We're not here to control other people's public buildings.
I think this one, I think this one, I actually think this ordinance predates the legal ownership of pot plants. So, that's probably why it doesn't.
Right, right, right. Has that in there?
Right. And that's what I think it does too.
Yeah.
But I'm not up on this stuff. So, I mean, basically, if the, if the select board would like to propose this, I can, I'll make this edits, make it a, a new dra, a new draft, a new ordinance proposal and then we'll put it on the August 20th meeting and we'll warrant it and let everybody know and get public comment at that time and then the, the select board could vote at that time.
Right. And A is the main one in section two, the 10,000 opening operational location of the dispensary in the town of Killington.
So, I, yeah, I, anytime we've had something that affected the town, we invited the town to the meeting and I'd like to continue with that.
Oh, I would too.
Yeah.
Well, here we are just making little changes.
Oh, no, I understand that part, but we're not adopting anything till we get more.
Right.
Yeah, because I mean, like, the original, yeah, that, that stuff there is, you don't want to get into that.
Yeah. Okay. So, Chet, do you need a motion from us to put it on the meeting?
No.
Or we just recommend?
No, just basically, I think what we're going to do is, is I'm going to put it on the agenda. We're going to warrant it on the agenda, but I think I want to do a little bit of public outreach in the paper ahead of time.
Right.
Well, we got three guys here now. What are your put?
I just, I don't, I guess in B of the first section, what, I don't know with 18 BSA, 432A, so.
We'd have to have an explanation because I don't know what that means either.
I mean, it just uses the word public place again, that's all I, that's what I'm questioning and I think we just.
Yeah, well, when I, we'll, we'll go.
D follows into whatever else is in section two, I'm okay. I don't really need to know what BSA is 432O. Just be aware that we're using public place again, that's all.
Okay. I just, I'd like to address it.
Well, and that, and the reason why.
It's pretty simple that way.
But Roger, the reason why I didn't pick on that one there is because section two is consumption, okay? And then section one is really saying, you know, A is saying, I mean, it says the dispensary and public. Section one is really just basically the, um, dispensaries, because the second sent marijuana dispensaries in the town of Killington.
Okay.
And then it's providing whatever. So, one, you know, one is basically the, the dispensary.
Definitions.
You know, and then it's just using the definitions which say, two is saying dispensary and public consumption.
Okay.
And I think we can only say that we do not want to have metal marijuana dispensaries, but we don't want it to be consumed in our public buildings that we own.
Okay. We own the golf course, okay? There you go. Public property, that's, that's under property. Any property or any golf.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we agree that, uh, we put that on the August 20th agenda. Town financials.
Well, we now have our year-end.
Have a good one, guy.
Thank you. We have our year-end financials. We actually have some good news. One is.
Page?
Uh-huh.
Which page?
Lot of them. Um, on the, on the revenue side, um, our taxes, which is fairly standard, although I think we, when you look at, uh, actual municipal taxes, we collected a very high percentage of, of the townspeople's taxes. I think that went very well. And the delinquent years put us up 181,000. So, we're about 150,000 up in, uh, overall educate and tax revenue. Another little bonus that I had to double check because it just jumped out, maybe it was the interest income being 31,000 where we budgeted eight, last year's actual was 10. And what that relates to is going from a 0.25 percentage on our account, it's up to 0.75, so three times the amount. So, that was very pleasant surprise. Reimbursements, um, we got quite a bit of reimbursement and the 18,000 for the workman's comp is a big number and that's primarily related to the fact that we no longer have the employees at the golf course. So, we were getting, being billed for that. So, we now have, uh, a much smaller bill for workman's comp. Town clerk fees slightly down. Let me go to where my next red light is. Recreation revenue is up by about $8,000, which I think was a good sign. And the local options tax, which we've talked about before, being up, um, 170,000 dollars-ish, which the bulk of that being the fact that we had about $90,000 up in the second quarter last year because when they did the budget for the current year we're in, um, the ops, the sales options tax had been removed. However, when you get the payment in August for that quarter, that was from the year before where we had sales tax. So, we did have a little bit of a bump there.
Town people were still continuing to collect and I.
Right. And, and basically what that does is that offsets most of the, the assumption that we were going to get 100,000 dollars from FEMA. So, basically that became a wash, um, at that point.
How's that assumption going?
Well, well, no, we're not going to get the 100,000 to us. We don't know about the payout yet. We still haven't heard that. This was, we assumed we were going to get another 100,000. another 100,000. We might still have to pay 259 back. We don't, we don't have that response. So that's the, most of the, the revenue side. On the expense side, our insurance, workman's comp was an improvement of about $20,000. Not quite, no, 14,000 was down. The fire department is running about 30, ran $31,000 under on their expense budget, which went very well.
Our town manager's down.
Our town manager's down. That's always good. But we, but that doesn't count the, the, was it the severance line item that didn't use to be there that had no budget, so that kind of washed out.
Moving forward.
Moving forward. And overall, you know, we were down in the facilities maintenance side, and, you know, a lot of the other items were closed or slightly down. The, one of the big items, we had a $62,000 bonus because before last fiscal year, the, we had inadvertently paid the entire county tax in the wrong year. So we got a bonus and didn't have to pay that this year, so that was $62,000...
Now we're catching up.
Benefit. And on the benefit side, we're about 70,000, we're about $70,000 under on the benefit side. The cost went down. A lot of that was attributed to the HRA carryover, things of that nature. That was about 30,000 of it. So what that all means at the end of the day, on our capital project funds, we're up 75,000, only because we had started the $75,000 hold for the, the pool money, which was not in the budget the year before.
Right.
So when you look at year to year, we, as it stands right now, with subtracting any minor adjustments, we are about $243,000 to the good. So as we sit today, that's a good place to be. We'll have to do, when the auditor comes and they make their adjustments, I'm sure there'll be some interest in depreciation, things that will adjust that number some. But overall, from a cash perspective, we are $243,000 to the good with revenue versus expenses.
In the closing of last year.
Yes. Just from July 1 to July 1.
So, these aren't numbered or whatever.
Let me see what FEMA has to say.
But listing, underneath listing?
Underneath listing?
Yeah.
Listing, which page is that? Top, right?
It's on, I think it's the second page. Second page top, 24,000, I mean, 24% over on salary and wages. If we just bring, you know, and I'm not, I know they're doing a lot of work, just in the future, you know, make sure that we get that right when we're doing a budget or whatever.
Well, we, we budgeted...
The year before, we were $4,000 less.
Right.
Now this year, we're, you know...
Well, we spent, the budget for the year we're going into, I believe, is 21 or 22. So we're right, in the right world, we just...
Well, we budgeted for 2019, 25, and we spent almost 30.
Almost 30, yeah.
Right, yeah. And, and, correct.
Okay, so just...
It's, the salaries and the wages, yeah, that's one of the things that we were going to adjust.
And I'm not saying anything's wrong with it. I'm just saying, let's be realistic if that's, if that's what it is, okay?
Well, at, at that time, I think that was also, and I, it was probably an error when that budget was created.
Right.
Because it was the year, I believe, we only, we got down to two listers for a large chunk of that year.
Right. So, but the one that sticks out to me underneath town offices, which would be the third page, telephone, I mean, we budgeted 12,000 and we're up to 16,000. I mean, what's telephone?
Well, again, the actual for the year before was 14,2, and...
We budgeted 6, so...
Right. So, well, here, okay. But the other piece of that is, when the year that it went from a budget of 6 to an actual of 14, the telephone used to be broken up into five or six departments. It was all moved to the town office that year, with its first year. So there, we're no longer, we're no longer allocating any funds, like, to the garage telephone. It's all one telephone bill.
Yeah, I know. I'm just thinking that it should be a little easier to budget for a telephone to be on target.
Yep.
Not 20% over. That's all. I mean, I'm not saying anything's wrong with it. I'm just saying that, you know, let's dial it in, that's all.
Yep.
Get the right numbers in the right place.
Yeah. I can't remember what this year's...
You know, I'm going to go good here on the other side, is, is that on, on the next page, underneath the fire department, for equipment maintenance, you know, we budgeted 40,450, and we only spent 27,772, you know? Overall, we budgeted for the fire department 199, 200, and we only spent 166, 168. So, you know, there, there's things that way, too.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to accept the...
Yeah, do you want to do that, or you want to, I mean...
Financials.
I just didn't know if you wanted to know anything on the treasurer's report before you vote on that, or you want to do them separate?
Well, we do them separate anyway, so the budgets.
Do them separately.
Okay.
Motion to accept the Green Mountain National Golf Course financials.
Okay. Anything else to bring up?
No.
Okay. I'm in favor of accepting the Green Mountain National financials. Please say aye.
Aye. And then, and now you can, we'll put the, the regular financials with the treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report.
I wanted to get the, the golf course out of the way.
Okay. Oh, I didn't, okay. Sorry.
Okay.
So the treasurer's report for the June 30th shows a balance of 1,868,000, with a balance of restricted funds of 1,51,000. What that leaves, as far as town money goes, that's available, is 817,342. Included in that is the 150,000 bond anticipation note we took out. So that really is all applied to the, the restricted fund on their side. So if you take the 150,000 out, that leaves our actual operating balance of 667,342. And of that, 600,000 of it is our current expense note. So it is the reason we have the 600,000 note, because that means we only have about 67,000 of available funds that we're using. It's actually ours. The rest is, is the loan money to get us through the end of this month. But usually, the last week of July, because the bills just went out, we will see somewhere close to a million dollars' worth of, of deposits. And assuming that that happens, then our cash will be back to where it needs to be, and we can pay our 600,000 back on August 15th with no issue.
So underneath the restricted funds...
Yep.
And, and I like the way they're doing the second line underneath. It says owed to restricted funds, but, you know, one would question, is it 1,51,500? Chet, do you have the treasurer's report?
Could you bring it up so they can see it?
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
I, I would just question is, so what we said was 1,51,000 in the restricted balances, restricted funds. And then the second line is 71,000 owed to the restricted funds. So is that included in the 1,51,000, or is that in addition?
That's, that, the 1 million, the 1,51,000 is the actual cash balance of what, when you total the positives and the negatives in the restricted fund. It does not add back in the 71,000.
So it doesn't add up the positives and the negatives?
Right. It, what adds the positives and the negatives, it comes up with a balance.
And then you add in the negatives...
Yes.
For the 71.
Right.
So I mean, I think, this is something that I asked for, but I think what we should be shooting for is, is that, that 51,000 should have included, the 1,51,000 should include the 71,000, saying that that is what the restricted fund should be. And then an asterisk there showing that there's 71,121 owed to the restricted funds.
Okay, because what, what Lucretia's, because it was banking, she's saying what the actual restricted fund balance is. And then I, I would suggest that if you want to do it that way, we would say the 71,000 is owed to restricted fund, which means that the balance should be, we could do a balance should be line.
Whatever. Or add them, or add them to, or add them together for a total.
That's what I mean. This, would add those two items together, and then it would say, this is what it should be.
Either way, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
So what we really know is supposed to be in restricted funds.
Yes.
So when we get the next, then, then it will even out.
Well, the reality is, is when, if we get the million dollars in at the end of this month, we will be funding the restricted funds. And when I do that, these will, it'll all be, we won't have a negative anymore, anyway.
So, just so we're honest and whatever.
Yep, that's fine.
Just do a, a total line underneath.
So that's, I mean, where, where are we expected to be from a cash perspective, which is why we borrowed the 600,000 to get through the rest of this next three, four weeks to make sure. On your restricted funds list...
Right.
The guardrail shows a minus $20,000. But I didn't get the last of the bills until, actually, today. So there's another 9,000 plus or minus that's added to that that we did, which was the finishing of the East Mountain Road guardrail. So that should be, that will ultimately read about negative 29. But when we put the funds in that we have allocated for this year, it'll go back to a positive in the mid-30s, which is what our normal annual expense is estimated to be for guardrails. So we'll be doing the next section of guardrail this fall.
Can you scroll to the treasurer's notes, so...
To the notes?
You have that on there, so anyone, anyone can see it. So that's just, that's just something that we've been doing lately, the last year and a half, like getting specific of receipts and, and the golf accounts also. Showing, giving, giving an explanation of the negatives and everything else. So...
You will note that on the two items, the teen center and the health insurance reserve, both of them have been zeroed out. So my plan, starting with the next treasurer's report, is not to have those two line items. They will not be things we need in the future. So those will become non-active.
So now golf accounts, number 2, is definitely the right amount now.
Yes.
And that's prior to us being here.
That is correct.
So you've gone through everything, and it's 286, 209, which I will once again say, we're not going to get that money back, so we need to talk about that in the next...
Right. And I, and, and the, the, trying to figure out how to do it with the auditor has been, is, we've been talking about it for about six months, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to make that write-off.
And the auditors are going to tell you, it's going to make your numbers look bad or whatever, but it's the truth, so let's just...
Well, no, I, no, the issue, the issue wasn't, isn't actually that. It was, the question was, are we going to need the voters to approve that write-off?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we might have to put it on the ballot next year.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, huh?
Yeah, I mean, so I think that was the question.
Yeah.
So...
Let's be realistic and, and end it.
Okay.
Well, because then we can give, then we can give an honest answer.
Is the board approval to give the money, that?
We're not sitting here...
I mean, it's not your board, I know that.
Well, no, I, well, we could have that conversation some other time.
I'm not having it some other time.
But when someone brings up the question of when will the debts be paid, we don't want to have money over here that, well, we paid this off, but now we got to pay this off.
Now we got 286,000 that somebody lent the golf course and didn't get back.
We want to be able to say, this is it. This is the payment schedule. This is when it gets done. And that's going to be all of it.
We're not going to sit here and tell you it wasn't a loan.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah.
So that question there brings me up to, on the, on the Pro Shop, the 137 that's in there and everything. I mean, I, we really got to watch to make sure that, you know, we really need a good July, August, September, and, and the two weeks of October, because we did lend the golf court, or the golf course went out this year and got their own. But it is us for 250,000.
Yes. No, and that's, and that's the key to this whole thing, is, is getting back to that, that payback. So...
Yeah. And, and all I know is that, I've said this many years, and it started off on the original bond of the golf course, that I will argue, if, if for some reason that golf course has a bad July, August, September, or October, okay, and we don't hit the money, that we can't get back to 250, the way that this board is supposed to run is, is that we clear the debt off at the end of the year.
Right.
And we put it out to the taxpayers. We're not going to bill every year going from...
No, basically, we, we are required, because the way we set up the loan, every December, mid-December, we have to pay that note off. So if we have to give money to it, it's going to be on the agenda for this year.
We're not going to go for one-year revolving notes, is what I'm getting at. And keep on adding on.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, no, that's not the intent.
Okay. That's all. So I'll make a motion to accept the town financials and the treasurer's report.
Okay. Anything further? I'm in favor of accepting the treasurer's and town report. Please say aye.
Aye.
Is this a warrant we need to sign?
Yes.
Warrant to collect taxes?
This is the warrant for the current tax bills that just went out on Monday. It just has the list of everybody that's on there, and we just signed that, that goes, that gives me the authorization to go collect those taxes.
You don't need a motion.
So there's really no discussion on that, right? We just have to sign it?
Yeah, no, just, I have to go collect those, and it's just a...
This is just given the town manager the right to make, this is not for our tax sales, this is a warrant.
No, we did that on, on May 7.
Yeah.
And that stuff is, I'm getting most of it back from the attorneys now, so we'll be starting that process here in the next couple of weeks.
So the bills that went out, they went out, the correction of educational tax?
That is correct. We actually delayed it two days, because when we had that issue, we did not print them until they went out.
Very smart.
So...
Thank you.
Managers' report.
Well, you stole my, one of my items was, we started reclaiming today, but that's okay. We are reclaiming.
Well, I did, it, the questions come up, because I work up there...
Yep.
I've been asked a few times when it's going to start.
Well, the reclaim started today.
Just wanted to let people know that it started.
They said it'll take about three days to complete the reclaim on East Mountain Road. That's about two miles. And then they will be moving to reclaim the section, Dean Hill Road, that's getting repaved as well. So that'll be done. And then the rest of the prep work will start immediately thereafter. Actually, we started, started a week or so ago with getting the ditch work together, and we haven't started stone lining yet, but all that's coming. But so far, everything's working the way it's supposed to. I did have driveway permits on the agenda for tonight, but after my visit with the, the prospective landowner that wants the driveway permit, I, they have some corrections to make, and we're going to put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
So we'll go over it at that time. Just a notice that the East Mountain Road bridge that's been slowly falling into the road is getting some rehab work, so there, there are going to be, there will be some traffic control there, but they will be doing work on the, the bridge.
Where, that the bridge of the resort that goes over for the skiers?
No, no, this is the bridge, this is the bridge that goes over East Mountain Road right near Trail, Trailside.
Oh, okay.
Before you get to the bridge.
When it says ski bridge, maybe you're going to tell us that it's the one that goes over East Mountain Road for the...
It is.
Yeah. It's the one that goes over East Mountain Road that they ski on.
It's the ski bridge that goes over the top. Yeah.
So the issue...
Hours?
No, it's stairs. No, they're working on it.
Oh, no, they are working on it.
That's what I said. So this is just telling us that they're working on it.
They're working on it.
Yeah, because they, the issues we had were twofold last year. First of all, there was stone falling in the road from the abutments, and then the other issue was, they had some leaks in their snowmaking pipe there, which were actually creating a, a constant ice puddle underneath of that. So they're, they're working on those issues. Parking at the, the falls down here on River Road, it's been a, it started to be, we're starting, I mean, it's great. We're getting a lot of visitors, and it's, it's going well, but they are parking on both sides of the road, and you can't get trucks down through there or cars, and we're asking for some trouble. So the plan I have right now is I want to put some no parking signs up just on one side of the road to try and make sure that they stay on the one side, and we have passability there. So that's just an FYI from that perspective.
You got it.
Hold on one second, Chet?
Yep.
Go ahead.
The bot in which the park isn't too large.
No, and actually, we don't...
Is it enlarging it?
The issue is the wetlands location and the fact that it's federal land, that we don't have the option, we can't just do that. So...
The stream act, the stream comes right up against it. And that's the problem we have.
It's something we can work on with them, but they're not that interested in really filling in wetlands to make that work. So that's one of the issues.
I'm going to go up to Dax.
Yeah. Put a parking garage in.
Federal parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the department update side, just so everybody's aware, we're, we are starting to schedule the interviews for the, the rec director after school program position. So that is moving forward. We have completed the committee, so...
Could you say, because what we, we had mentioned Jennifer, and Jennifer declined because she knows too many people that probably apply. So who is the fifth person then? Missy Carr?
Yes.
Who is a human resource person.
Yeah, she's agreed to, to be on the committee, and we're just trying to schedule the, the interviews at this time.
She also has kids that are going through the program.
Right.
Yep.
Which is something we wanted.[1728.12]